Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call?
Lois Tiley. Diane Dennis.
Here.
Christine Newman.
Here.
Richard Horner.
Here.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Here.
And Sarah Tiley.
Here.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I hear motion accepted. Approve the agenda as first. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Public announcements? Any public comments? We'll move on to the Spicer report.
Well, good evening. It's nice to see everybody in person for a change.
Good to see you.
Thought maybe I'd just call in on my phone for old time's sake. You have a copy of my report. Probably one of the biggest things we need to talk about would be the drinking water asset management grant. St. Charles is in the fundable range for that grant. We had a meeting, Hart and I did, with Eagle last Friday because they would like us to revise the scope of the grant to reduce the number of water services that we're going to be excavating. Instead of excavating every single water service in town, the DEQ or Eagle now wants to do a 20% random statistical analysis of the water services in town. So we will only be excavating 20% of the water services in town. So what they're trying to do is reduce the scope of money and give more money to more communities. So the good news is you're getting funded for this, for that project. It's going to be a drinking water asset management plan and also your final distribution system materials inventory that really is geared towards all your water services and in particular lead water services and trying to identify and eliminate those. So we are working on that scope revision right now. Should have something to Eagle later this week. And I would expect to see an agreement from them in the next month or so. So, and that's going to be probably around a $400,000 to $500,000 grant, 100% grant. So.
That's nice.
Yep.
We really wanted to do it all in the Phase One area, which would have been perfect and really dropped some of the things we had to do over there where it's not allowed. But it has to be random, 174 random houses.
All over?
So it'll be all over.
All over town? You take, you take all the water services in town, put them into a hat, and you pick out 20% of them?
It's going to be like going down Grasset, like I did today, trying to get through the closed spots.
Probably won't, probably won't be that bad.
Okay.
We will be doing hydro excavation, which actually you take a vacuum truck and like a pressure washer and they, and they vacuum out, oh, probably about 18-inch hole, straight down. They'll do that on both sides of the curb stop so we can identify the material going to the house and then identify the material going to the main.
Okay.
And then we'll also look inside the house to see what material is coming inside the house. So every water service needs to have three locations identified.
And we learned today we have to bid that out?
We have to bid out the hydro excavation.
We have a local company we wanted to use, but it's over, was it $80,000 or $50,000?
Yeah, over $50,000.
About $85,000 to do it, so we will be bidding now.
We have been working with city sewer services out of Carlton, you know, to do our budgeting and so forth. But we found out that we do have to bid that work out.
Do they have specific people we have to bid it to?
No.
There's no, there's no rules and regulations?
There's no rules and regulations. It has to follow the village's bidding policy.
Okay.
No prevailing laws, no David's?
Yep.
No prevailing, okay.
Correct.
I worked with one of those once. Those are nice.
It's hard.
Yep.
Jacks the price up a little bit as well.
Yep.
A little bit.
I was trying to be polite on camera, on the record.
So, so that is very good news and that, and that asset management plan needs to be completed within three years of the agreement. I'm thinking it'll take us a year and a half, probably over two seasons. So. Water system Phase One, we are actively in the design phase right now. You do have a work directive change in front of you that's going to be for later on in this meeting. Talking with Don and Hart, we wanted to change around some streets, eliminate a street and then add, add a couple more in. So we are going to be doing the survey work on that probably next week. We're still on track with that project to have the design done and hopefully bid it out for construction in '22, '23. So that project is moving along nicely. Fulton and Hosmer, the water main project. I was just talking to Don. He said the paving is done now. So that project's done. We are closed out.
I'm waiting for a thank you note from the parking lot.
I would think they would be.
I would think so too. It looks very good.
Oh, it turned out very.
Sure we do. We could send a bill.
No, it turned out very good. People were getting, people were impatient, but I understand.
No, but it looks really nice.
And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, I was a little taken aback that you had a meeting on August 5th, but that's last year, right? August 5th with the pre-application meeting with Paula?
Oh.
That must have been last year.
That was last year.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. And we still are, are working on that, but we're looking at funding for '22, '23. So we're not really in a big yank to get things turned into the USDA yet.
Okay. No, I think we're moving right along here.
Has RCAP helped us with any, John, or?
Haven't had to get them involved yet, but we will get them involved, I would say, probably fall.
Who's that?
RCAP is a rural community... I can't remember what the A is. Program. It's, it's a federally funded program that helps out small communities doing environmental assessments and helping with some of the grant administration.
It's not like rural development. Something different.
It's a, it's a different agency, yes. But they do environmental assessments and that kind of work for free for communities.
Oh, okay.
Anyone have any other questions?
I hope it was nice seeing them again.
It is nice seeing you. Thank you.
Move on to the council minutes, the minutes of the last council meeting of May 12. Any questions on those? If not, you hear a motion to accept and file.
Make a motion we approve the minutes. I'll support.
Yeah, I'll support.
I'll vote by the end of it. Thank you.
Okay.
The commission is committing their reports, Park and Recreation.
They're going to do that reading program in the park.
Correct. Correct.
We'll approve the minutes for me.
Okay.
Yeah, do the planning commission.
At the end. No questions on that? Any questions on the planning commission minutes?
I don't understand when it says he doesn't have the big black book yet. What does that mean?
I think he meant, she meant the, the online code of ordinances that we have online. He doesn't have the actual book.
I have one of those at home. Does he want it?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
We're not even close to being there. That's why, you know, she, we're not close. It's a 12.
Did Jim McPhail turn his stuff in?
Not that I'm aware of.
You might want to ask him for those. Those are quite expensive.
Yeah, I can do that.
He doesn't need it anymore.
Because we didn't get one, I didn't get one.
You didn't get one?
We had to make one.
Well, you came late. That book was before you were, I think.
Oh, it was, yeah.
Because they used to be.
But I should have got the one from the one person before me.
Yes. Maurice returned hers in two. I make a motion we accept and file the minutes for both. Now I'll second.
Communications. You have your review magazine? Anybody have any comments or anything on that? If not, move on to the payments or claims. Anybody have any questions on those?
I have a question. How many buildings do we pay?
Each location is its own, so I have, there's probably an Excel spreadsheet this big, like just different lines. So there's probably 20 or 30, like each pump has its own, each building has its own. So they send me each individual ones and they come at different times of the month, so it's, they're just kind of sporadic. Yeah.
There's one for streetlights, here's one for.
Yes. Yep.
So I was looking at this, I'm like, wow, that's, I think they're just buildings, you know?
Oh, yep, nope, like the streetlights and the parking lot lights and.
No questions? Other than those? I hear a motion to pay the bills.
I have, I have another question. On page six. For May 2021, the, you're doing laboratory services. Is that three different people that do that?
Um, yes.
Yes.
I think so.
Yep.
Don knows.
I just want, does it take?
It's the lagoon testing.
Does it take three people to do that?
It's the lagoon. Three times.
It's just the way it's paid out. It's, they get paid per lab test. Just divide it on three individuals.
Okay, so the date on here, 5/18, isn't one that was done. That's just when we paid.
That's when the whole bill is. Yeah, because every time we dump the lagoons, we have to sample.
How often do they do that?
It's, we can dump for 10 days. It ends up being about seven tests per cycle. In each lagoon style, we have to do that.
What's a cycle? I mean, how often?
We dump in the spring and the fall.
Okay.
So it's twice a year, so three lagoons.
Okay. You know where they are? Of course you do.
I would just like to mention that the balance report has dipped slightly down, under $3 million. We're going to bring that back up, right?
Yes, and the cash does not include the money for the dump loan. So that $139,840 is not in the cash where it actually is, but we've taken it out just for that purpose.
For the what?
For the dump loan, the new dump.
Dump truck loan?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's still there.
Well, cool.
Yep. And the CD line includes $8,250 for fire insurance funds.
Okay, I just wanted you to know then, watching.
I know you are. That's why I made a note that the dump truck loans is not there in cash, but it's there.
Bloody well immersed.
Okay. I'll take your word for it. Yeah.
Any other questions? Quit now. Anybody else?
No.
Can we get a motion to pay the bills?
We make a motion to approve the payment of claims in the amount of $144,936.82.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. Moving on to new business. We have a memorandum of understanding.
So this is the next step of the redevelopment ready communities through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We started this all at first, last spring when I first got here and then COVID hit and it kind of died down for a while. But this program is to help communities find grant money, partner with the state, find local matches or local companies that are looking to relocate, bring jobs nearby, help match businesses with shops. So this is the next step legally. I've done the onboarding, the training, so now right now, we're currently working on the memorandum and then they have a program management software that I have to upload all of our ordinances, all our codes, all our website information, parks, our five-year plan, our master plan, so that they can see it in the system and kind of give us a baseline ranking of what we can do better to bring in small businesses and be more competitive. So this is the next step of, this is the third step of 12 or 20 here. So then we'll begin addressing best practices. They'll conduct a formal baseline assessment and then we'll review their report and determine if we'd like to continue. There's two different paths. There's a kind of a essentials certified community, which is the basics. Or there's like official certified certified, which is more huge cities like a Saginaw would be certified in that. We're looking for essentials where we can get help from Saginaw Future, MEDC. You know, they do have a planning section. Part of the reason I went after this was you can get a grant for up to, I think it's $27,000 towards a new planning rewrite. And so my plan when this started was to have them pay for our rewrite. And now we're going through it, but it's something that we can kind of partner with and they might be able to help us in the future with that, so.
So we just have to approve this.
Correct.
We have a motion for the.
I'll move to approve the redevelopment ready communities joint memorandum of understanding.
Support?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. West Drew Street. Is that the media or?
After finishing over on Fulton and Hosmer, Scott from Freeze came over and we have a great relationship with them. They're very fair to us. They help us out on side, little side parts that, hey, maybe this wasn't part of the scope of the project, but we'd really like to help out entity to be named later or unnamed. Like we'd like to get this parking lot. What, what would you add to that or could you get that for us? And they cover us, they help us out. And so he's like, yep, happy. Don's so easy to work with. I said, you liar. No, they have a great, we have a great friendship relationship and he's like, we're happy to come back and do anything. And he's, as we're standing out there, we're looking at the parking lot and he's like, well, your road is kind of messing up your new parking lot. And I'm looking down the road and it's one that we pave regularly or throw in, you know, patch in and the fire department uses it. It needs to be nice. It's one of the worst roads. So we started thinking, you know, the main's pretty good on this side, so we're not going to have to put it in and then tear it right back out. So I said, well, why don't you just give me a little quote on what would be from here to Cherry, just through the intersection. And came back and I think that's a pretty fair price.
I do too.
And they're, you know, family-owned, small business and they do great work. I think when they come back, if this is approved, I'm going to ask them about the basketball courts next and see if we can get those prepared at the park, some park money and keep, keep moving on with them and hopefully they're a part of our Phase One and just a good, good company to work with. And if, Don, you want to speak to anything?
Yeah, they, they are good to work with. They're fair, you know, they're honest, which, not saying a lot of contractors aren't, but you don't necessarily have, you're off doing something else that can still get done right.
When they say three inches, you get three inches.
And there's, there was a couple patches that weren't in the bid from the water main project that were away from the street that they did take care of without.
Oh, down the main street there?
Uh, no, they were on Clinton and a couple of them where they tied in. Come around the edge where they weren't, weren't in the intersection, but we got off the intersection to tie in. They done those without. And there was a cold patch we used on Saginaw Street. They didn't want to pull out till the end. They said, well, if you, if you come down and pull that little bit of cold patch out, we'll take care of it when they get it.
Okay.
I, I think they did it with us a pretty good job.
It's a nice job.
I'm, I'm pretty well satisfied.
I was, I was, I was, actually talked to Hart about it. Why didn't we go out to Belle Avenue?
Why didn't we?
Yeah. Just the price?
I think it was a money thing and that was actually probably a better block than the other two, I think.
Yeah, it's just kind of bad going. There's, I mean, there's some pretty good sized bunks up there, but.
The key cost don't originally.
Okay. Okay, because we just kind of skipped that.
Yeah, I think we were trying to stay within a budget. And I think the plan spent kind of a lot where we improved the infrastructure.
Well, and they might need new water lines down there, would they?
There is no water line down that block.
There isn't? Not to the church or the houses?
They come off the other, church comes off Clinton and then.
Does that mill house come off?
It comes off Clinton also.
Does it?
Yep.
Okay.
They never used to, but there was a two-inch we abandoned a couple of years ago.
Okay.
That was causing those problems. And that, that's kind of how we got rid of Marcy Street too, by running a long service here and there. Get rid of a few blocks of water main that like only served one house.
Really old water main.
Right, and only serves one house and it doesn't affect, and they all looped. Trying to save some money and it doesn't affect service of the area, so.
Okay. Now, this money, I take it we're taking away the paving money? From the paving money?
This would be from the Village Street Fund.
Yeah. And we have quite a bit in there, actually.
Correct.
I don't know where it went.
$286,000.
Well, no, we have $286,000 in there. So I think doing this out of there is perfect. Anybody?
We, we need a motion for the.
I was just going to ask that, so that's not a bad price?
No, no, that's good. It's a block.
I don't know what they.
You will know when we start bidding out longer streets. Yeah, no, that's a good price, especially for three inches. I know.
I'm a little too upset. The proposal for West Drew Street.
I'll second.
Support?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's passed.
Another price to Kathy, they're milling it too, which is like.
Yeah, they're taking it out, which is good.
Okay.
So just paving on the top.
Do you have a place to put that?
Oh, we've been using.
I think they're paving over this right.
Yes, we have a good use for it.
I thought you probably would. I, well, I see it actually specifically says we must take care of the milling stuff, the, the stuff they pull out. We have to.
Yeah, they use their own truck, trucked it out to the Village DW mine.
Oh, well, that's nice of them to do that.
We didn't even have to haul it, so.
Because I can remember, I think it was Kathy's road where we had to line up with everybody else to get our first share of the spot.
That's a free for all.
Yeah, it was a free for all, yeah.
No, they hauled, they took their own, uh, cradle train and hauled everything out there, so.
Well, that's worth a lot, right there.
It's quite a bonus, really.
Oh, and there's a work directive change.
So after, after meeting regarding Phase One and talking about abandoning some areas or tying in here, making sure the alleys were addressed first and with Don and John, this is additional to what the work that they've already completed that we approved earlier. So, John, if you want to.
Sure. Yeah, what, what this work directive change is for, we want to delete Marcy Street from Phase One and then we want to add East Bell from Saginaw to Chestening. We want to add East Hosmer from March to Chestening. And we want to add Lake Street from West Bell to Clinton Street.
March.
And that should be Marcy.
Or Marcy. I get, I have fat fingers sometimes.
Yeah.
We'd also like to rename it.
So. Normally, normally we would not, I mean, we would look at this and say, you know, we're swapping one for the others. However, the survey work is already done, so we need to send the survey crew out again to get these additional streets. The design work, we are not charging any more money for. It's just, this is simply for the cost of bringing the survey crew back out and picking up these additional streets.
And that Marcy Street, Bell to Hosmer, that's where the doctor's office used to be and where the lawyer's office is. Is that right?
No, the lawyer's office is down on Vine.
Vine.
This is where the church is and the, and the parking lot for the.
Marcy Street goes into Frank's parking lot.
It would, yes. It would, yes. It's like on the last island.
Okay, so the Seventh Day Adventist Church is on that other corner?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's another two blocks that basically by running a long service here and there, we can get rid of two blocks of water main. And it won't affect fire or service.
There's nothing there.
No, we just run a long service to the one house.
Okay.
It'll be really, it'll still be looped good to the new main for the water tower and so.
What will that do for Marcy Street then?
It's, there's main down there now, but it doesn't need to be because there's one house that it services.
Okay.
We'll be running the main east on each block, like on Hosmer, there'll be a new main. On Clinton, there'll be a new main. On Bell, there'll be a new main.
And this is, this is all water, not paving.
Correct. This is just, this is for water main. And so what we, what we would do with then is during the design, we would, we would abandon that water main on Marcy Street as a part of the Phase One project.
To be paved at a later date, which is when you'll find out how much it really costs.
Need a motion for this?
Make a motion or accept it. We want a work directive change.
Support?
All support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
It's not for the fairness.
This is just a preview for Friday's DEA meeting.
I love this.
It has been anonymously donated to the village, so I hope they approve it on Friday.
I hope so too, because it will make a lot of people from the 1963 football team very, very happy.
1954 baseball team too.
They, they, they celebrate themselves almost every other year.
You guys are old.
I'd be careful.
Hey, New York player?
Yeah.
So I'd like to, well, next DEA meeting when Dan's back from Montana, I'll get the home of the Bulldogs freshened up too. Just because when you go out and picture it on the show, it just puts a little, you know, a little mess roughed up, so.
Okay.
I'll get that cleaned up and bring that to DEA for their, their payment. But this has been, yeah, an idea that came about and.
That fencing stuff.
How busy is that?
I don't know if I like this fencing stuff.
Lattes?
It does. Maybe it could be just some planks that go across here.
We could probably do something.
Yeah, I don't like that trellis stuff. That's just my personal opinion.
I'm in the same boat. I, I sat there at the Lions Club, you know, collecting money in the middle of '52 and I'm staring at it. I'm like, that is just not, it doesn't look good. But then that's when I was like, oh my gosh, that's a perfect spot to display the championships. While there you're going through the light, stopped at the light, you have to look at it. You're looking at the sign anyway. It goes too fast, so you can't read it. Might as well look at some of the, you know, celebrate. I think it's a nice touch and I think it'll look really nice if they approve it.
We'll have to get more championships.
Well, look at the bottom, the bottom right one. Well, look at the bottom, the bottom right one, have you seen that?
Yeah.
Even though this is the donated, do we have any idea what the cost of the actual project is?
Uh, around four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, so it's probably something we could've whipped up ourselves if we wanted to.
Correct.
Okay. Ooh, this is nice. Um, that sign...
We put it in when we were in the chamber, didn't we?
Yeah. Wow, I'm trying to think, the chamber, well, you know, Parliament's ran it for a long time.
Did they?
Yeah, Charlotte and her husband.
Okay.
They used to go up and change it, but I don't remember when we put the electrical one in. Deb ran it, so it was at least probably twenty years ago, at least, yeah.
It's been getting faster ever since.
You gotta be quick.
Dr. Klein, you can't put seven paragraphs up there for... Thank you, Village of St. Charles, oh, I better stay here for another two lights.
Yeah. Or you go, what did that say?
That are upcoming events.
See one light when you come through, then go back again to read the next light.
I've had time to Steve's, I'll just say, gee, you got a lot of time.
You can just kinda tell them that we like it.
I, I will, I was hoping to mention it so that maybe they'll support it.
How can they not support this?
Great question.
Okay.
I, I, great question. I'm sure there's a way.
Okay.
I am sure there is a way.
Yeah, you've been here long enough. You understand.
I'll tell you Friday about noon.
When was the last time electrical was up?
Okay. The, the electrical on the sign?
That's what I'm on, the departmental reports, DPW report. Anything you wanna highlight, John?
I'll just say, if you wanna go through it, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, uh...
Well, I'd throw out the waterfalls back up and running, Don, right out of the gate.
But that's not, um, me.
That, that came out in the...
Well, in June.
Well, I'm sorry for stealing your juice.
But I'm telling you, is that little thing and it runs?
It had some issues and we were able to get it corrected while breaking the bank.
Good, 'cause I really, it really, it sounds great.
Yeah, we had some concerns that it was gonna be a major, major object, but I think we got it where it works.
Did you have it done while Doug was still here?
I don't know if, it was after beautification.
Ah, that's a shame.
I think he, he must have seen it, because I think he commented on Hart's post on Facebook.
Okay, okay.
I, I, there was a short video Hart put on there and I, did he comment on it?
He was the first one.
So he was, he was aware that it's...
So he, he was happy, so we're happy.
Yeah, we got some more economical pumps, we don't have near the money in the pumps that the original ones were, so...
Well, did you turn them off between two and seven?
They're, they, they, no.
Okay, so there is.
We haven't had our first bill yet, but...
Okay.
I, I think they're due, they come out at, uh, eight in the morning and I think they go out around nine, nine thirty at night, is what the timer said, I believe, also.
Okay.
Sunset to sunrise.
Sunrise to sunset.
Sunset, waterfall.
Sounds very nice after beautification, did it too?
Yeah.
Did a great job.
The weeds are coming now, though.
Oh, yeah. It's pretty dry.
We're trying to keep up, but it's...
Can you hook?
A lot of things that they've done are...
Are they, are, they don't have, we don't have anybody that waters them?
We, we have been watering.
You've been watering them.
Don goes out about five AM and does that.
Well, thank you, you find a hook up something that works good?
We have something that one person can use and it's not a hassle, it takes about an hour.
Okay, okay.
We adapted one of our little hydrant pumps to run a little pump with a truck and it's, it's pretty hassle-free.
Good. 'Cause I don't think they'll make it without any water.
Don's dedication is unmatched.
We try to do our best, that's all I can, you know, it's...
And in between that, you run the, in between that, you run the township, so that's really good.
Like I said, we try to our best.
I noticed the township gets a little bit more water on their flowers.
Do they?
I've seen their water belt for the first time, I think we can afford to use some of their water. They're far below a minimum.
Anybody have any questions?
No, you're doing a great job.
Yep, very good job.
We got a good team, we get along, we're...
Good.
I know we can't please them.
New guy, how's he doing?
He seems to be doing okay, he's learning, he's...
Takes a while.
There's a lot of stuff to learn, yeah.
Something new every day, actually, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, on the truck driving and equipment, I know that he's pretty good with a lot of the little stuff, you know, there's, comes out of the blue and he's getting some, uh, he's learning how to full sewer pump.
Is he? Do you guys still have a boat out there?
No, I was, I'm talking about the actual lift station.
Oh, it's a lift station, okay.
Of those areas, we don't use.
You don't use anymore, okay.
When they're on their life cycle. And we still seem to get good numbers, we don't, not affecting their guest crews, so... We're saving a lot of power.
Move on to Police Department report. Anyone have any questions? Our chief have any comments?
Uh, busy day and June started off busy too, just as we, uh, improve, um, ending the school and beginning the summer and, uh, those types of things, so... Other than that, I guess I don't have any comments right now.
Okay, I, I have a comment, I saw a picture on Facebook of you, I believe, in front of the police car in a maybe Wonder Woman outfit. Okay. I, I think, I love what you're trying to do. I think that's taking it a little bit too far when you show up in a costume in front of the police car. Were you working that?
She was volunteering for that fundraiser, for a little boy who has a rare genetic disorder.
No, I don't, I don't argue with you.
No, because you are being absolutely ridiculous right now with that.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
You are. I bite my tongue enough with you and I'm not on this one. I, I will not bite my tongue with you on this one.
So anyway, I think it gives off the wrong picture when people call me and say, "Did you see your chief of police on the..." and I wanna say, "What was she doing?" And I said, "I don't know, I know they had a fundraiser down there." And, um, but I think those two things together don't go, okay? Um, if you wanna be there and not take any pictures and do whatever you're gonna do, that's fine, if you're on your own time, but if you were on our time, what would happen if something happened and you're dressed in that costume and you've gotta get in that car and go answer a call? Were you on our time or on your own?
That, that's a volunteer thing that, I was, I'm, I'm not on duty.
Okay, you were on duty.
Oh, no, absolutely not, and, and that's, yeah.
And that's what I told you, you were not on duty at the prom either, right?
That's correct.
'Cause those kids loved it. They just thought it was wonderful that you came to that, so that, that was a good thing. But I just, I wanted you to know how I felt about it, um, and I felt the same way when I was the manager. I really went after somebody for that, so I just wanted you to know. But other than that, I don't have any problems with what you're trying to do, I understand what you're trying to do, I agree with it, um, I just wanna see, is there just, there's just you and Berg? How long is Berg gonna work part-time, do you know?
And then, and Ethan as well, so...
And Ethan, so there's you and Ethan, you're the full-time people?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, I met him Friday, he brought my packet over to me, I met him again and it reminded me how young he is, are, are you training him? Are you tra... I mean, are you working with him constantly to build up his, whatever he's gonna need to? He's right out of school, right?
Um, he had about a year, a year and a half, I'd have to look, um, with another department.
Oh, he did, so he's worked somewhere before?
Yeah, and he is doing at least two trainings a month.
Okay.
Either through the state or through the, uh, end goals.
Whatever comes out.
Yeah, they're all certified, so, yeah, I, we don't work together because we want that, that coverage, yeah. Um, but he absolutely, and, and I posted, I put it in there and I put it even in this one, regularly doing trainings, reg, regularly getting education, just to keep growing and learning. There's just, there's a lot, and it's the same, I have a lot to learn too and...
Yes, yeah.
And I keep...
And that's why I want you to know where I'm coming from, you know, just make different decisions, um... Be careful, you are the person that's out there in the front, so, um, you have to act like that at all times, unfortunately, so...
And I, I appreciate you.
Even when you're off duty?
Yeah, even when you're off duty, but, yeah.
I just wanted to mention something also. Um, I noticed at the Memorial Day parade that, um, we had a firefighter driving one of our police cars. Is there a liability for that? I mean, are we supposed to have non-employees driving our vehicles?
So as far as the liability, the insurance coverage part of that, the vehicle is covered, he is covered, and if he's on duty, then also the fire department covers that. So that's not a, an insurance coverage, um, necessarily concerned, that's all taken care of. Um, however, I apologized to, um, Hart and, and I told him, 'cause it says in our policy manual that I need to get the authorization from him prior to having anybody that's not, uh, a village employee drive a vehicle and I did not get permission from him, so that will not happen again, so... Um, but as far as the liability part, it would have been covered.
Were the guns removed from the car first? 'Cause that could change the liability coverage.
The, one of the guns was removed, but not both of them.
Okay.
Let, let's kinda not have the fire department drive any police vehicles. And perhaps one of their vehicles could've came up as the last one with their lights going too? You have, they have more than one, don't they?
And that's, well, in the past, that's how they've done it too, the fire department was the last in the parade and...
The intent was not that he was ending it, that the intent was that he was just blocking.
Other people front, yeah. And I think either vehicle probably would've done the same thing as long as their lights were going and... And, uh, I, I, it's my understanding we didn't get a permit, permit either?
We, we were not aware that they were going down fifty-two and nobody let us know, so... We did not apply to the state, yet they...
And once again, we did not get caught.
Correct.
But, um, you know, it's, it's a simple thing to do, Jay, you just, 'cause we have a blanket permit, we just need to let them know.
Margaret sends the email and we normally get notice two to five days.
Yeah.
Yep, you are approved, it just kinda gives them a heads up.
It's a nice favor, it'd be nice if they'd let Hart know what's going on, 'cause...
It would.
We had no clue of what they needed for their...
No, and there could've been a ban there too, I mean...
They didn't ask for anything, so we just had them to have some up there, but nobody formally, I don't even think...
They didn't?
They didn't even ask the village to close the street, I don't believe. I'm just saying, so we, it was kinda...
I don't remember, I don't remember being asked to close the street by...
But I think we were asked...
Is it the American Legion that runs there?
Yeah.
That would be Jay.
If, if they expect...
That's right.
Assistance from us, it'd be nice to have some...
I'll let him know.
With, with the village manager, so...
Yeah. Doesn't he talk to you all the time?
At parks.
By the way. Okay. Building inspector, Hart?
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, hi. As you can see from the complaint log, uh, we had quite a few come in in May. I'm down about a third and about half of what we have there for June. A lot of the grasses have been cut. The Arborland apartment complex, um, I'm hoping to do a final on that, um, by the end of the month. Down in the State Department lot's finished now, we're just waiting for the finals on electrical, mechanical, and plumbing and then I can go through and do the structural. And then we can shut that down. That's about all I have, are there any questions?
If I didn't get a nasty letter, mine passed, yes? If I didn't get a nasty letter, then mine passed?
You won't get a letter that contractor would.
Okay, I haven't heard from him either, so...
No questions? Public comment, anybody got anything they wish to bring up? If not, you're a motion to adjourn.
I do. I probably should've mentioned this during the park, park, but, um, park report. I took my mom to church on Sunday at the park. Baptist churches doing the services out there now in the summer.
In one of the pavilions?
Yes. And it was mentioned that the bathrooms weren't unlocked, I do...
It's this.
It was mentioned that the bathrooms weren't unlocked, um, and it was also mentioned that, um, the portages weren't something we wanted to go into. I don't know how often those things get cleaned.
Do they know you're doing this? Are you aware that the church is holding services?
Yeah, yeah, they knew about that, yeah.
And we, we have worked out, you know, we gotta call Sunday morning that they weren't open, so we've worked out a system going forward that it won't be a problem anymore.
Okay.
Uh, for cleanliness either. Uh, as far as the portages, we've had to call them a few times and ask for new ones. They're moldy and just gross, even when they're dropped off.
I, I think those are clean once a week when they empty them like that. It used to be on a Tuesday, so... Last year, when we didn't have our bathrooms open, we were kinda touching them up every day, but we only clean our bathrooms every day now, so...
And then, I just wanted to mention something too, um, to re-ask you, Dan. What's, what's the deal with the sewer at the corner of Hosmer and Lake Street?
There's a water leak there, we're actually gonna work on it tomorrow.
I just don't suspend it for a while, I just wondered if there was something.
Oh, there's been a small leak there for a while, but there's some issues with shutting it down, but I think we got it figured out now, so...
Check Facebook tomorrow for updates, if you're out of water on Sanderson.
It should be just Lake, maybe a little Sanderson, maybe a little bit of the Hyatt.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support?
Second.
All of the favor? Meeting is adjourned.